Everybody should know where we are.
Should I play the music?
That's what we should have had playing last night at the start.
We used to have a normal one of our meetings, the last one, whoever's late would have to tell a joke. You've got people there on time. They don't want to be onstage.
It's called effective project management.
We used to stand up and give people, we'd just stand up and give people standing ovations when they walked in. Matter of fact, we do.
I'm a little cheap on them, they literally had to do the whole thing. That's how I do it. So we are on camera this year now. So I want to welcome everybody, this is the joint town council and school board workshop slash meeting for our finance committees. It is a little bit after two o'clock, we're in a little bit of a tight schedule, it'd like to be done by three o'clock as other people, some people do have appointments. And so we need to get to work here, we just want to welcome everybody, all the members of both finance committees are present as well as town staff that have been supporting us. And we do have Chairman Bill Donovan that is also here with us, so thank you for joining us, Bill. And the first item on the agenda is old business, which is the status of the glossary development.
So, we're still getting close, I'm thinking maybe by the time we vote, we take half them all down pat. Ruth was nice enough yesterday afternoon to send me a couple more, but I believe Sean.
I'm fine with everything that's been written.
No, 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 you have some that you're supposed to write out. I appreciate that you did though, but yours we still need some help with. I think there's only like three.
That document that Ruth sent out yesterday, it didn't have, I didn't see the ones that I had sent in that.
Yes, that was, because the town site doesn't have Google Docs, so I'll take her, I'll take her email.
I just want to make sure that the ones that sent you are going to go in.
So, do you want me to tell you what?
No, can you just email me? Not the document, just email me, what are the three definitions? I'll have it to you by five o'clock tonight.
What are the three terms, maybe we could help Sean a little bit?
Help out, I'm wondering what they are.
Unfunded mandates.
Unfunded mandates, okay, that's easy.
Yeah, there's no like numbers here, discretionary spending.
That's why she gave you easy ones.
And these told, still going, unfunded mandates. Two, you have two.
Okay.
Do you want to do those right now, or do you want?
No, okay, okay.
It'll take two seconds to email back and forth and we'll be on track.
The beauty of that is that's a document that will last into time and I'll incorporate it in the budget document, so we won't have to go over this territory next year.
Right. Well, it won't even be new, they'll be just ones that we can add to, I mean, some of these are obvious ones that will stay on here forever.
Is there somebody doing final editing on those, like as far as if they thought it was too wordy or not the right words?
That might be something for a later agenda topic after we get through the.
Perfect.
Once we have them all, we're sort of gonna all look at them and say, hey, I have a question on this one. The next, I guess move on to the next item, if anyone has any questions.
We visit the CTAIR, our main pre or end pre report finding.
I suggested we put this on just because, was it just at our last meeting we had the report, or was that two meetings ago?
Maybe it was two.
Two, I think. Well, whatever it was, from my perspective, we didn't really have a chance as a group to kind of digest it and maybe identify a couple of takeaways. And I think there was some, in my opinion, there was some good work here, some substance that's worth at least discussing. I just would hate for this to get tucked in the file and not considered, so I just wanted to put it on the agenda to kind of prompt the conversation. If you guys are comfortable with receiving it and moving on, I'm fine.
So I'll add a part to this and then go from there as a recap. So, just because I forget that we're being televised, monitored, watched, whatever you want to call it. When we started the conversation around the study, one, it was to validate independently the expertise information that were being given by the superintendent's office and the staff and the school board. So, one, I want to say thank you for that, it confirmed exactly what we've been told, more statistically, I think, than the narrative conversations that we've had. However, the exercise was intended to help us identify what would be an appropriate measure, metrics, ratio, whatever, however you want to label that, going forward, that can synthesize all the work that is done to help the council in particular, but even the community as a whole, to know that we're achieving our goals with the spending. So, for me, the only takeaway is those two, one, either accept the report as it is and leave the conversation around metrics alone and not identify one. Or is there one that is embedded within that report or embedded in other data that I know the superintendent provides on a regular basis and some, a lot of documents that are online, that can be aggregated with the town metrics that they're creating, so that we can include that portion of it. So, to me, that's the takeaway, either we accept this, as Tom mentioned, and just say, you know what, it's too complex and we don't have a ratio that's really good, because there's so many. Or is there one that can be added, or two, or three, or whatever it might be. And when I say a metric, I'm looking personally, I'm looking for a macro approach to this and not an individual. So as an example, while I'm personally in favor of the per pupil approach, subsets of that might be interesting, but to me is more within the purview of the school board to monitor. So as an example, that report provided us with literacy, math, and science, I think it was, for, was it three, six, or three, six, and eleven?
Five, eight, and eleven.
Five, eight, and eleven, sorry, that's to me, Michael, so, you know, is there a macro kind of ratio or macro metric out of all of this that we can look at? One, or two, or three things? And I would take, personally, I would take the recommendation of the school board and the staff that can be included in the metrics dashboards that we're looking at creating on the town site. So, that's kind of my position.
Yeah, I'll kind of chime in, I mean, I take a similar, I have a similar view, but maybe a little different approach. I do think that the, to me, we, we, we're striving for the trust but verify approach of, you know, what's been out there, what's been told, what we're using as metrics is verifiable. I think a third-party independent analysis just verifies what we've been saying all along and what the school board has been saying all along, in terms of where we're at. It doesn't mean, it's not a roadmap for how we go forward, it's a snapshot and analysis of where we're at right now as a district. So, I, while, I mean, I agree the metrics are important in the dashboard, I think that's a great check-in, I don't think that's the end-all, be-all. I think from a council, counselor perspective, I, we have the fiduciary responsibility to the school board side of things, we need to, we're the budget interface, that's all we are. So, for us, it's important to see where the money's going, how it's being spent, what the results are. I would defer to, to your point, Sean, I'd defer to the school board for what metrics you want to measure for performance and what you feel is appropriate and how to measure it. I know that's a very, that's a lot easier said than done, because it's very controversial in terms of things like, you know, teacher performance and how do you evaluate all those things and lump it all together. So it's not as simple as picking out page four, paragraph seven, and saying that's what we go with, from a performance standpoint. So, I think it's a good basis for the conversation, to say, you know, when, when, with any department, I would, you know, when we get finally to a point with the municipality, hopefully where we have a similar set of dashboards and measurements, we could say, okay, public safety, you know, we're looking at these three criteria, there's your performance there, but, you know, there are other things that play into that department that, as a council, we don't necessarily need to know, but that's what the department has it for, if that makes sense. So, I, you know, I see it as a verification of kind of the conversation you've had over the last several years. And I see it as basically, hopefully, a mechanism and a means to put that discussion to rest about where we're at and where we're measuring and be able to say, okay, we agree where we're at, how do we get, how do we move forward, where do we go from here? And where do we, you know, what's our priorities? It's all about establishing the priorities. And as long as we're, we're sharing those, they wouldn't have to have all the same priorities lined up, but the two or three that we can recognize and track, I think, are the important ones.
Can I just push a little bit on that one point, because both you and Sean make it? So, if there's this verification or validation, I think we need to articulate that, to make sure everyone appreciates, we need to put it out there so everyone understands, perhaps shaking their head yes. Then more importantly, we need to communicate that out, because the audience around this table, though important, maybe the most important, I think the real value in this is kind of making sure the community appreciates that, what that validation is. And if we can simplify it in kind of sound bites or the elevator speech, to me, that's a hugely important thing, is for the residents to have a baseline appreciation, kind of an assessment of Scarborough schools. I don't know, it's probably easier said than done, but I think that's, there's a disconnect there.
Do you see that in like a report out, or do you see that as like a council comments, or in lieu of the budget comments or something?
I don't know, I think there's any number of communication strategies that could be used. We're now, we're now at the point where I think we can get beyond some of the critiques of the data, perhaps, and be a little more finite in terms of what is that kind of simple takeaway? What is the assessment of Scarborough schools? And then, to my great surprise and delight, this actually also looks and indicates what could you be doing better? And that's a different conversation, in terms of identifying, maybe also boiling down to metrics, but identifying this is where we need to exert some attention and investment, and we need to measure success around that.
I think it does a few things, I think basically it establishes per pupil cost as a legitimate and appropriate measure, and if you want the macro, there it is. It gives you an opportunity to take a look at other apples-to-apples comparisons in terms of, we are spending too much on administration. Actually, we spend the least, in terms of almost all of the schools in both counties on administration. We can, we can use it to monitor special education costs, are the costs in Scarborough be accelerating at a different rate than other places and so on? I think it establishes us as a member of a cohort, and I think that what that did was it looked at spending and efficiencies, but it also specifically brought in something very important to us that is a little bit more nebulous and a little bit more difficult to do the comparisons, and that is the student outcomes. And it, so it's a start there. And, you know, and I think that it really, this sort of nicely serves as a great starting point for the board to say, you know what, we're gonna, you know, this was really, this did not cost us a lot of money. And this data is all publicly available, so it can be verified by anybody who has any questions about it. But, we also established, I think, Kate, I think you might agree, that we established a sort of a nice relationship with these folks to be able to say, all right, let's, let's take another, you know, barometer reading and, you know, after we get our testing sort of underway and we've got a couple of years under our belt, let's look at where we are then. Or maybe even just a refreshing of it on an annual basis, I think could be very helpful. But this, you know, the pieces that I put in the summary are things that I thought were important for the community to know. And, and that was about establishing us as a member of a cohort, and in fact, one of the higher performing members of the cohort group. And when we look at the highest performing members of the group, we are knocking on their door. Regardless of being in 14th place with US World in News, which is really a function of how many AP tests did kids take based on the population, we already said that we're having difficulty, you know, we're turning kids away from AP. So it's not, it's not that there's not an aspiration to take AP classes and do well, and the kids generally do well, but we're not offering AP sites that kids want. You know, we only do that every so often, we're not allowing every kid who wants to get into an AP science class in, because there's more kids than we can actually accommodate. So, those, those, those kinds of things that are more the public rankings, people go, oh, you know, how did you fall, or we're going, we're going, you know, we're going off track. Well, as I pointed out last night, the data is from 1314, so it's, that data is already two years old. So it's telling you about where we were in history at some point in time related to AP class, which I'm, I'm not sure that that's as important as some of these other pieces. How are those other cohorts spending money? What kind of outcomes are they getting? It seems as though, except for the highest performing schools, everybody else in the cohort is seeing that sort of that droop at the high school level. And, you know, and I think that we've seen that, and we've been awakened to that a long time ago and have been working on that. But it takes a long time to kind of turn a big ship around and really, especially if you're investing at a, at this level, where you could potentially be investing at this level. So, you know, I think they did a great job, and I think that it really, it's a great stake in the ground, that's what I see it as.
So maybe we, we agree then, just to renew the, revisit them, I mean, it's kind of the foundation this year. I mean, short of flagging something now that we're gonna pin to for the budget and say, this is our benchmark moving forward, I don't think we're, I don't know if we're ready to do that or not as a group. If not, then we come back and look at it again, update the metrics next year with the same parameters, the same exact criteria, and then we, you know, three years makes a trend, right? So if we start looking at that and then we say, okay, we're identifying those trendings, then the discussion shifts from, are those the right trending ones, to which ones are up and down, and what does that mean? And are those the ones we need to be concerned about?
To me, that kind of forward thinking, I think that's really the work and domain of the Board of Education and the, and the school staff to sort out, what does this mean and how do we make investments? And it's up to you to articulate that, be able to demonstrate why this investment needs to be made and what the metrics are, that's really your domain.
Just a little different spin, maybe I'll build in a little bit on what you said. One of the, one of the other goals we have though, is, as a community, to think about one budget, one town. One thing we recognize is, how do we tell our story? How do we get the information out into the hands of our constituents so they understand? And we're starting to get a lot more questions around, well, you know, we're kind of approaching the budget one year at a time. People are starting to ask, what does that mean longer term? So one of the opportunities in this might be, or what I was thinking, or kind of builds on Tom, is there a story we can tell? And I'll just use the business experience, I was at Hennepin for a long time, but they always had a three-year business plan, so they could say, here's where we are, here's where we want to go, and here's what we're gonna kind of use as our measures along the way if we're getting there. Is this an opportunity for us to tell a story? And we've had a lot of questions about the value, the value of money that people are getting for the tax dollars they're spending. I don't think it's a conversation for today, but I'd love to find a way that we can tell a story about as we decide, as a community, where resources go. Where do we want to go, how do we want to get there, and what are the measures along the way we're gonna use to kind of report back? So I'd love to have that conversation at some point, I'm not sure where it fits.
The first step that you just described, where are we, I think has been, there's a bit of a disconnect, and I think that's one of the fundamental things this does, is really, I hope, establish, kind of in a simplistic form, where are we? Kind of the very macro state of Scarborough schools. The forward stuff is really the work of the board.
I'd like to step back and say, I mean, that was the presentation that Sean gave last night, the 1-3-5 message. We're in year two of a, of a, of a five-year kind of process, if you will, a little bit. I mean, I think that, I think this is part of that process. I mean, I don't think it's, you know, that's why I said I think it's a good foundation to start building on. And then, the point of having this joint, this joint committee is to be able to communicate what's going on between the two governing bodies in an effective way, so that, A, there's no surprises at the budget time, and B, that we can plan accordingly to say, okay, if we know, if we know there's a public works building coming next year, or in two years, or three years, or X number of years, we know we're not going to be looking at school and school facility investment. So we can have those kind of, you know, 50,000-foot discussions of strategic discussions. I think this helps that, because what I mean by trending is, I don't necessarily want to get into the weeds and go, well, item number five is skewing 3% in the wrong direction, what are we gonna do to fix that? It's more of when we do have this discussion again of, I'm sure the next year is gonna come back and we know there's gonna be at least three more positions for the high school, that's a given, we've already been informed of that next year. If there are other ones, then the question I think we have as counselors has to say, okay, well, what do you hope to accomplish with that? What is your, what's the goal with that? This helps give some of that credibility to that discussion, I think, because if it's a question of, well, we need an administrator to manage us, you know what I mean? Then we could say, well, what do you, where is that from? Well, if you look at this report, we're short here, so we're clearly, it's not a question of overstaff, it's not the tool, it's a tool for helping.
My second point is, I don't want to lose the potential value of telling a simple story to a wider audience. And, in my mind, I can boil it down to, you know, two lines, we do it cheaper, better than most. And people may disagree with me, but. We're more cost-effectively. We can work with that, but I think those kind of simple little pieces that get repeated and people understand, that gives you a stronger foundation from which to build. And I think, whether we like to recognize it or not, I believe that there's some fractures, there's some parts of our community that don't believe that today.
There always will be. I mean, I agree with that, I know that that's the case, but I don't think that's something that can be fixed in a year. I mean, I think that's why we did the 1-3-5 thing.
But I don't know that he's saying it has to be fixed tomorrow, he's saying if we start that process now, people will start hearing it and looking into it and finding out that it's actually.
This is about rebuilding, well, no, I don't want to go there, it's not really trust, but it's really, it's making sure everyone is on the same page, that has a fair assessment of where we are.
I think for, for me, just to sort of talk about that report, and then also what Peter was saying was sort of looking forward, with that report, I, in my mind, I see two different avenues. One is, yes, we're, when you look at the whole group, we're running with the folks at the top, we're knocking on their door, I like that sort of, that thought process. But that's in terms of, someone had asked, why did we choose those people? It's based on performance, and so, when you base it on performance, you see the clear definition of those, I think it was five at the top, and we're, we're right there, number six. So to me, that's where we as a school board are saying, okay, we are so close, there are few strategic investments that we can make that will really turn the ship, will, will make a difference in, in where we fall within that top six, say. So, I sort of look at it that way with regards to performance, that's our task, we need to figure out how to make that better and move up that list. But with regards to the long-term planning, we, we do that with a 24-month improvement plan, it started as an 18-month and now it's 24 months. So we ask the community, what's, what's important to them, what, what does the school department need to do to move ahead, or move forward, or create something better, whatever. It could be, you know, recycling, there's kids that are involved, there's students that say, I want more string instrument lessons, or whatever it is. And we sort of tweak that out to come up with, what are our goals and our plans to move in the next 24 months to reach those goals? So, and that keeps, you know, we keep going over that, and yes, it's only 24 months, but I think at this point, that's about as far out, because things change so fast. So, for, on education, if you're looking 24 months out, it's considered a pretty long time.
To add, to Chris's point, Chris, just, you know, my recommend, or my suggestion of picking or finding those ratios isn't to measure the shit's budget. It's to get them in place so that we can do the calculations, we can find the resources to determine what we want to measure it to, so that we can start looking at it next year as part of that story. Personally, I would be happy with three ratios, per pupil cost, class size, and graduation rate. To me, those are big pictures about the success of the school department. The smaller pieces, I trust the school department, the school board, who are elected to make that determination for this community, you have that trust to determine whether or not the other pieces are working. That tells me the highest level. And as far as the cohort piece, personally, I don't like comparing Scarborough to other communities. I'm a father of a graduate of Cape Elizabeth High School, and I can tell you, Cape Elizabeth is not any better than Scarborough. And I can, I mean, I went through it, 12 years of schooling in Cape Elizabeth for my daughter, they're not any worse, they're not any better, they're just as good. So, there's some, obviously, some personal value in how you interpret dollars as well. I would rather see us, and it was part of the report, is to use an average of the cohort that is, that is being used. That way, we're not looking at us and compare us and, do you want to get that data, it's available, but we don't need to look at it, and here's the average and here's how we compare to. If anyone wants to criticize the cohort that is selected, even if we choose another cohort and we're outperforming that, it should not suggest that we deteriorate our system so that we're equal to the others. It should, if anything, say, we still need to continue to get better and continue to be further apart from the rest of them. So, I look at the glass being half-full and half-empty and still being an opportunity. So, however that's done, I'm just saying that from, and I've said this privately to you, but I'll say it publicly, I'm tired of talking about just education in this, in this town. There is more to this community than education, it is a very important part of it, but fire department, police department, public work, community services, senior services, everything, administration is just as important. And this committee was intended to talk about all of those services and not just the school department, because we should be held accountable about what are the metrics we're going to use to measure the other parts. Because this is only one very big, but it's a, it's one part of that story, it's gotta be balanced with the rest of it, and we're not doing that.
And I'll, I mean, I'll just add the last two things, I think one of the challenges, we're coming at it with similar but different goals, right? I mean, our goals from the council is a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that the money that we're investing is being used appropriately and most efficiently as possible, and that it's a good solid investment, and we have to decide how that, how that money is invested. The school board has to do that as well, but their primary, their primary issue is performance, that the kids need to do certain things, they need to behave and perform certain tasks and achieve certain things. So I think the, one of the outcomes I hope of this collaboration is melding those student performances with the fiduciary performance, so that when the school board comes in front of the town, or the council in the town, and says, I want this investment, because it's not, the discussion shouldn't be, I want this much money. The discussion should be, we want this outcome, this is the outcome, this is what we want the kids to be achieving. And then, this group will sit down and say, well, what does that cost, and what is that worth? And that's what the, then the public will decide, or maybe not, if we don't get the, but that's, that's what I want the discussion to be around, what are the outcomes that we want? And get shift from the, you know, are we investing 100,000 or 200,000, are we taking out 200,000? I think the, that's really what I'm hoping this group can bring together. And then we can present that, that common approach of, look, we've done our due diligence as counselors, we've looked at it from a fiduciary responsibility, we know what the investments are gonna be, we know how much, we know why, we know where. The school board can say, these are the outcomes we expect, that's what we're tracking, that's what we're, that's what we're going for. And in a year, or two, or three, if that doesn't happen, whatever we decide the reasonable timeframe is, then we go back and reevaluate again. And we say, we made this investment before, we agreed the outcomes were what we expected, did we miss something? Was it not, not a large enough investment, was it in the wrong place, was it a different program? Then we can have that discussion about the accountability portion of it. So, I think the report is actually a very positive thing, because it starts, I think it helps us move in that direction more of, instead of talking about the detail, into the weeds too much on both of them, it allows us to take that step back and go, well, we trust that that data is, we may not, we not like it, we may not agree with it, but we trust that it's, it's unbiased, it's a third, it's fair and neutral. Then we can now move the discussion on to, what are our. Then we can now move the discussion on to, what are our priorities for investment? And why?
And you know, when, and I'm stating the obvious here, but I felt the same way last night, thinking, we're talking a lot about sections of, pieces of money. And I kept thinking, we need to step back and sort of think about, there were, there were, there were three older people in the second row last night. And two of them, I think, I didn't get to talk to them after, lived in my neighborhood growing up. And I sat there and I kept thinking, these people are now members of the Scarborough community, and so am I. But I moved back here because of my community, not because of $50,000 invested in athletics. Or it, it was, it's a bigger picture. And I felt like we keep losing that as we get closer to the budget vote or discussions. We, we lose the point. And so I agree that we need to stop talking about per pupil spending. For us as a school board, we don't make the budget thinking, okay, does this meet the, the goal of per pupil spending? Like it's not, it's, yes, it's a metric that you all could use, but it's not something that we consciously say, okay, we need to have per pupil spending at X. We're looking at, we need to invest in five teachers to create an outcome of 11th grade or whatever that report was, of performance. And how that shakes out sort of just shakes out at the end, and we're like, okay, there's where our per pupil spending is.
With all due respect, I can, Chris, I can remember you articulating on behalf of the board standing right at this podium, using per pupil as, as a way of, I think, demonstrating that we're, we need to be funny more.
Right. It's something that can be used after the facts, but it's not something that we use as a school board to say.
But the point of this is that every time that came forward, there were a lot of folks that dismissed it for this, that, or the other reason, that it wasn't valid. And what I hoped through this, by having kind of this professional, independent view of this impartial, is that we could transcend beyond that and get away from the weeds to say, this is the best data that's available. The simple takeaway is that we do it better than most, and we spend less than most.
But people are still going to look at the weeds, and that's fine, but that's not come to start as a process.
No, but I think your point, Tom, I mean, we, we do have to justify our actions to the public. And I think that's up to our, that's our prerogative as counselors and as a body to say, why, they're going to ask us point blank, why are you voting for this budget? Why are you supporting it? What, what's your mechanism behind it? I think, I think to Jody's point, I, I think what she's trying to say is they don't craft the budget. They don't start off with, with a blank sheet and go, okay, we know our per pupil spending is X, so we take that, multiply that by the number of students, and that's our budget. I think what, I think what the per pupil spending does is it's, it's one of those, it's one of those potential indicating factors that could be used to show whether the investments, whether we're putting too much money, not where it's going. It, that, that's a measure of how much money you're investing, not where it's going.
I'm just observing from my perspective. Up until now, and it may, it's proceeding, it changes in the future, that per pupil, those statistics have been ineffectual. In fact, there's been noise around, they've taken us away from the real discussions in many respects. I'm hoping we can kind of step beyond that, start to have a real forward-looking discussion. This is important stuff to check in on from time to time, but it shouldn't be the primary conversation piece. It has been. You know, in my experience at Hanford was, you know, I always had a sell-in at the C-suite, every time I wanted to do anything. And when I talked about investment, what I'd always do is say, okay, here's the investment we're asking for. And here's what we're going to come back and talk to you as a measure of our success. So for each, each time we came, that establishes trust. You go and you ask and say, okay, we're going to be accountable for whatever that ask is, this is what we hope to achieve. And what we did little by little, as you start to build that trust, and that, that's what we kind of need to do with our constituents, that we are making good investments. These are the reasons we're making investments, and as we make those investments and we get the outcomes we say we're going to get, that allows us to continue that, that those tensions go away and there's greater trust. So not trying to describe what those are, but I think as we tell our story, we should really talk about the investments we're making, the value we think we're going to get for them, and how are we going to determine how we do, however we do that.
I think we've done that with that. I think it's a good job of that.
I mean, an example of that.
Yeah, but that's, but that's looking, yeah.
An example of that is that.
No, I mean, I know what you're, I know what you're saying. I, I mean, I just, and I think we're doing that already. I think that's part of the process and part of the, I think.
We might be doing it, but I'm not sure our constituents know the story.
But that, and, and you're right. And I think it's like any, like any, it takes a while for an doctor, for, for the, we start, we've got to start that process. I think we started it, we're two years into the process. I think it's, you know, I think the real question is, is when do we want to get to where you're describing, Tom? Do we want to do it this year? Do we want to push and try and get it done next year? Or the, I mean, sooner we get it done, the better, obviously. I just don't know how, how, how realistic it could be to get there in a, you know, this year or next year.
I think we're doing it, we're just not.
Communicating.
Everyone doesn't understand it. Case in point, the simple takeaway for me is that we need to do, something's happening at the high school. I don't know what it is, that's for you guys to figure out. And in fact, last year, we had a million-dollar investment in technology. This year, we're looking at the thrust of staff improvements at the high school. That's exactly the way it should work. This is kind of a big picture, something, you know, this is, we need to invest in the high school. That is for you to figure out how to actually put that money to play and make that cogent argument and secure the funding for it.
And then the story, what did we accomplish by those computers and the additional staffing? And, and that's the measure, I think, that has to come out is, look, this is, we did this. This is the outcome.
And it could be, we're going to improve reading and math scores by 2% over five years. I, I'm just
So
spitballing.
One thing to keep in mind is that in education, for, even though I'm not the expert, you're not going to see that investment return for quite a few years. So no matter what ratio you pick, you won't see that until time has passed. Second is that, it gets, drives to my point. My point is that I don't want to be talking about, personally, about how much money goes to high school, middle school, or the elementary level. That is, the school department's determined what their goal is and where they're focusing. I want to focus on the bigger picture from, at least from a synopsis basis. We can still have a conversation, engage in a conversation, you know, because it's nice to know. But I don't think this town council is a second school board where we need to start looking at, what is the success rate of the high school versus the middle school versus, that's not, you know, I, it's going to do, so my point to us three, if we're going to do that for this particular department and not diminish the role of the school department, then we need to do the same conversation with every other department. And we haven't focused on any of that. And so I think that there's an overabundance of conversation on this end of it, and I'm just saying. And by the way, we're, we've got 23 minutes. So, yes, so what I'm saying is, if the, if the consensus amongst the group is that we're not going to identify a metric and we're going to wait a year, then I just want it to be on the record so that I know in my own head where to post this for, you know, for the next conversation type of thing. Or are we going to sit there and recommend, here are some macro-level type of metrics that I, and like I said, I have three. And I'm okay with per pupil, class size, and graduation rates.
I wonder whether, what I'm kind of hearing has a pathway into the outreach piece. There's always a continual struggle for us. And I'm, I'm looking at the website, the budget portal right now. We have the CPARE study posted. We have an introductory paragraph to it that talks about what it is. Withdrawn, maybe, it's just the intro to the report. But I'm wondering if, from what I'm hearing from Tom and from Peter as well, if maybe we need to jazz it up a little bit and say, hey, there's this great report out here, here's an intro, here are the three bullet points, here are the takeaways. So we have this gateway for people that we're hoping they're going to take advantage of. Maybe that's the small stuff that we could take to tell the story with what we already have there. We just tell it a little bit more consciously.
That's exactly my point. I didn't want to lose value of this. Because if not, it would tuck in the file, and maybe we'll talk about it next year, but.
So if it's there, but it's, it's something where I look at it and go, geez, I'm not sure I really want to read that. Maybe there's a way for it to be a little bit more exciting. And our city council director and the town clerk are working on a fairly comprehensive newsletter that gives you snippets that hopefully will catch your imagination so that you can then click on it, go here and start to see some of it. So, you know, if, that might be a way to start that, you know. Is that an e-letter, like an email?
So, back to where I started.
Put Marketing Manager down as a, as another, as another facility piece, we need.
We can share them.
I'm not surprised.
It's a shared service.
But are there a handful of takeaways that this group can come, come to consensus on? So we can.
I think we can use my takeaways. I have five takeaways. I think they're all reasonable. I think they establish a baseline that the board will, if I were to recommend, the board can take and move forward. Essentially, it's page three of the summary. It's, it's essentially saying, you know what, we've been matched in terms of like resources and like capacity to resource schools with a whole group. We've then been compared in terms of our outcomes, which is the learning outcomes for kids, which is sort of our deliverable. And what it does is provides enough data to say, and here's how we do it better, to your point. Here's how we do it better. Compared to all of the cohorts, we spend the lowest amount on administration. Compared to all of the cohorts, when we've made investments in the past, all of those investments have been made in the classroom. You know, the per pupil cost is this. This is, I mean, it's, if, there, these five takeaways in some ways really, really, I believe, I don't know that anybody could come up with any other takeaways, quite frankly.
Fair enough. I want to make sure this group had comfort around that.
I think it would be best, you know, and again, you know, I plan to, you know, work with Kate and with the board chair and others on the board to say, this is, as I said, this is a great starting point. And there's a way to watch these metrics because now we are established, we've got, we're in the same group. We can see what they're doing, we can look at our outcomes. We always want to increase our learning outcomes, but we don't want it to be at the expense of being less efficient than where we are right now. Those are the three pieces. And the, and the matched capacity to pay or to support schools is already a done deal. Now we're just looking at, to what end, what result, and at what cost.
So I guess maybe then I'll make a motion, not that it's binding or anything, but why don't we, what if we just take that paragraph and post it up? And stand alone. I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
I can change the intro and punch up the size of the report a little bit, and yeah, we'll make that our intro.
Can you make the language jazzyer?
Well, it will be jazzyer than what's on there right now, which is the CPARE's intro, which is very research-based and technical. This will be George's more narrative piece. I, this is completely off-topic, but I noticed that the link to the budget itself, our nice document that we want everyone to read, it really keeps me up really low on the page. So maybe that's something where we say, hey, read this, this is the one piece that you really need to know. This narrative is going to give you everything you need to know, and put it big and high.
Add that in. Talk to Sean.
All right. And I, I can edit on this page, so. Does it even look more like, like, little newsie section on the board page? You know, like, has, like a little thumbnail of the calendar, structured calendar, like. You want it to catch their attention and grab them, so that they can then turn around and be interested in reading. Well, I'll make a deal with you. If you guys don't change anything in the budget that I have to fix, I'm going to have to make a deal, right?
So, to move that forward, this is great. What I would, personally would like to see in addition to this is just if there is any consolidated data to support the statement. So when you make a statement that says, and it is not, because I'm questioning whether your statement is accurate, is to be able to point to it. During the same time period, Scarborough's investments in systems and school administration in contrast was significantly below that of the aspirational cohort.
Click here for the graph.
Whatever the graph is, wherever, if you want to, something, that's what I'm, that's exactly what I'm looking for.
So might I suggest to move past this? Kate or George, if you can put the whole piece together, you want to just share it with folks? And then we can, we can work from there?
You will be graded on sentence structure and spelling as well.
And, and jazzing it up.
And jazzing it up. And appeal, yes.
Jody's okay and everyone, we need to really, we've got 15 minutes, maybe 20.
I'm actually going to write it down.
Under debrief, budget rollout with updates if needed. I think we covered that last night. Is there, you're talking about the schedule, right?
Yeah, I don't think there's anything new there.
There shouldn't be anything.
Can you just tell me the time of our joint?
I think it's seven o'clock.
It's seven o'clock, right? And the, oh, uh, joint.
Should it work out on the 11th?
Yeah.
Yep. Seven o'clock.
Yeah, because the fours are the council meeting, right?
We have, we have finance for.
I, I do want to make sure that people are clear that on May 11th, which is the town council's finance meeting, the last one, there'll be a presentation by, on the town side for, about additional staff that weren't funded. The rest of the meeting will focus on the recommendation of the finance committee that will be sent to the full council. So any adjustments that are made, whether it's the net appropriation for schools or even on the town side, that's where the committee will decide and take a vote on its recommendation, so.
And that's at four o'clock?
That starts at four o'clock. May 11th.
If you didn't have any budget adjustment or changes from what's in here, if you can get them to me, because I'm creating a list.
So one of the things that I'm going to ask for the finance committee, my finance committee, as well as recommendation, as well as from the rest of the council, is to submit any recommendations or considerations so that I can basically herd cats and balance out the commonalities and get those kind of situated so that, you know, if there's a consensus, not taking a vote, but if there's a consensus, take care of those in advance, and then drawing out those that may have a conflict or may have some discussion around so that we can get through that fairly easy. So, and as soon as those are known, if there's anything that impacts the school's budget, I'll make sure that I share with you, Jody, and the staff as well, actually, all of you.
We will be sitting together then later that evening, right? So it would be a good opportunity to kind of.
As a request, can you just send that formally out in an email?
Oh, absolutely. I'm going to be doing it as soon as I get out of here. The next item was debrief on last night's forum.
Yeah, just, we thought we'd check in.
Yeah.
Good job, Chris. Thanks.
I just wanted to mention, I really think, Jody, I just want to say thank you. You did an incredible job, much better than the guy I had to work with last year.
I know, I know.
It was, no, all of you, you know, and even on our side. We may have only had 15 or so people, but it was still well worth it. I think that, you know, it just tells the story about where we've been and where we're going, and next year will be even better.
There'll be many more that will hopefully look at the questions and answers online when those are posted. So I think there'll be benefit beyond just those that showed up.
From the audience, it looks like a very unified.
Do you know how many people you got?
Up there behind that table, I thought it was really nice. It was really the one between the folks at the table. I thought it was very nice to see partnerships. When will all those answers be posted?
Tom, when will the answers be posted?
Because I know that all, not all the questions were prior to last night.
Right. There were a handful that came last night. We've written those down, we sent the school ones to Kate and George, and we're tailing our end. I would think by end of business tomorrow.
So the ones that were already answered last night that had come in in advance, are those up already? I didn't look today.
No, no, I'm not. I thought it'd be best to wait a little bit, put one up and keep it up.
Do you know when you want that to go up? Because I know I looked at one of the questions last night, I thought, oh, I tried to answer this on the paper, but I didn't finish it. And it's like, oh, I hope they don't ask that question. There's a couple that I have to.
I noted that. And I'm glad they didn't ask it, because, you know, as soon as we can, maybe as soon as the end of business, you know, by the end of business tomorrow.
Maybe also a caveat too, if there are additional questions, not post them there, but send them to chairs.
Yeah, we're not going to continue to keep that portal open for more questions, but certainly I would hope folks can reach out to anyone around this table if they have questions.
Just as a fallback, just say, further questions please here or wherever.
And Peter asked that, and I'll see if we can, we'll track once that's up as the document, the number hits, just so we get a sense of the traffic that's going there for.
Could be the same one of us hitting it 12 times because we didn't have a chance to read it in one sitting.
Two things that I wanted to mention, one is a takeaway in that I, as I hope, because I tried to emphasize it a little bit in the purpose of my presentation, is that, you know, it seems like we get caught up with these gotcha questions. They're not really fact-finding questions, it's more like, oh, you know, I want to make a point type of thing. And you're always going to have those. But I hope that if anything, the message that came out of yesterday, which is a big jump, is that you can't look at simply the change that happens from last year. You really have to look at the full picture and see what has happened over time. And I, I got a lot of positive feedback from people that were watching at home about that it was a very clear message from both the school side and the town side, and that they really appreciated the, the long-term. One of the comments that I got was, the best graph was the one that showed the tax rate that kind of just went up and spiked down, and it really, they didn't, people don't realize that. They didn't, they didn't realize that. So, you know, and the other piece is that I wanted to clarify a question that I had answered, which was really a school question because I called the state today. The estimated, if we were funded at 55%, the estimated amount. if we were funded at 55%, the estimated amount of increase that the town Scarborough would get is approximately actually $5 million.
Well, you know, it makes sense because it's based on your expenditures.
So, it's not the four that was mentioned, and I, it kind of being the nerd, finance nerd, tuck, whatever, spent nerd, I actually looked at what would be the impact if we actually got 4 million, is what my answer was, we'd actually be saving every residential tax pay $178.
If we didn't add it to their budget and we just used it to reduce the tax.
Right, I mean, there's, again, like every other tax, you have to assume, thank you, I assumed that there was no future investment as a result of the $4 million, which is on the listing.
That's why we're having this meeting.
But, but, well, but, you have to stick the, what is it, stake in the ground at some point. So, it would be, I mean, it just shows the importance of the state's contribution to education in our community.
Well, and it goes to the point that one of the reasons that we've had such difficulty in these last five years has been because of that loss of income, and not because of the budget on the town or the school side going cuckoo, it's the revenue.
Well, and I also looked and said, you know, if, because there was focus about, well, if we didn't have the windfall, which was a horrible word, what would have happened? Well, what didn't, they didn't ask is, what would have happened if we were at least funded flat to last year? This year's tax rate would only be 1.3% based on the budget that's been presented.
So, state was funded.
And then the $1 million, it would have been 1.3%.
I mean, dealing with speculation is just, it's, I think it's a waste of our time with the resources and stuff.
Not a waste of my time.
You know, I mean...
Maybe you can leave.
Yeah, trust me, it's a good idea. I, I mean, I do think that the, go ahead, Tom, I lost my train of thought.
From an editorial point of view, last night, we had Kevin focus on questions only. Many of the questions had a little commentary that was a preface to, before they got to the actual question. I don't want to take any liberties in editing someone's work, so I'm inclined to include the commentary and the question in the published document.
So, you mean when Kevin actually read the question? He just read the question piece, he didn't give the...
Correct. Yeah, we went through and parsed out the question from...
Who said it, who questioned, and there were a lot from a few people. Who wrote, who asked the question, and I think it was just right off the ship, right? Whatever, how it was going on.
Yeah, I'm sure, yes, people took the time to write it. I think it's important to put it out there. Okay, I just wanted to...
If two people didn't submit the questions, it would have been a very long night.
And I think...
If two people hadn't submitted as many questions as they did, it would have been a very long night.
Or short.
Very short, yeah.
So, the other thing I was going to say is, I think, I think we, I just want to be careful that we don't, we don't, and my school board associates have heard me say this many times before, hope and faith are no means of a good strategy. So, I don't want to sit there and say, oh, I wish we could get 4 million or 5 million from the state if we could do this, blah, blah. To me, that's a wasted exercise. We, I think the other approach should be what we're taking, and that's, you know, let's plan on losing that money, so it's not a surprise, you know, and let's focus on what we need to do. If that comes in, great, that's, that's not a problem. If it doesn't come in, that's the problem. That's the problem.
I just wanted to also thank the staff from both the town and the school department. I mean, there were 40 plus, maybe 50 staff members there last night, taking time away from their family, their lives, things to do.
And voluntarily, right?
Sure, I know they were on the school side, they were volunteers.
They were all volunteers.
I heard a first few change and grow the most, I don't know.
They're not getting huge bonuses for it, I can guarantee you that, too. So, I just think, you know, it's a lot to ask. I know the school department, people are probably coming back again tonight for our meeting, so it's just, it was nice to see all of those leaders in this town be there last night.
If they volunteer, then they'll be there tonight. I suspect you'll see them all, Tom.
It's a giving group.
You know, one format thought, again, if, when we do it again next year, if it's a low turnout, what might be nice to kind of create some interchange is that, and I think it could have been that some of the, something that sometimes gives loss, I think you write a question down and then someone else interprets it when it's asked, maybe just give the opportunity for people to stand up and at least have a quick follow-up or something, you know, that wasn't my question, or, so you get a little bit of that and forth. But you can't do that with 100, you might even do that with 20, so just a fun...
I was even thinking, I was even thinking to myself, it's kind of like to, to maybe, I don't say limit anybody's potential, but to say maybe, you know, you got to be present to ask your question, but then the flip side of that is, I know people would say, I don't like to get up in public, I'm nervous, I don't want to, you know, so I have questions, I just don't want to get up there in front of the podium and, because I'm nervous, but I, I mean, that, given the option, why not?
Yeah, I think sometimes, the question could be, you know, or maybe it didn't really answer what the person wants, you just, you give them a quick...
Simple question from Kevin, as he reads the name out, if the person's present and they want to follow up or something, the podium's right there, raise your hand, kind of want to up to the podium.
Yeah, the first year we thought about passing the mic, and we just weren't sure of turnout, whether it would be possible just logistically, but you're right, if it turns in the way it is, I think that's entirely possible.
You did a great job.
Good, thank you for the input.
Revisit running list of topics for the May 12th and May 28th meeting.
That's down in the box, below, those are kind of a running list of issues. Hold your...
You're not limited to that list.
So, the question I have is, question whether any of them are even so relevant, given the conversations we've had to this point, and if we should be looking at, I think that if any, personally, I'm happy with removing all of them, and maybe suggesting that we start looking at pre-planning for next year, so that by the end of the budget cycle and the budget, we can state to the public that here's the forum process for next, or not the forum, but here's the budgetary process for next year, that will follow exactly like it is today, you know, things like that, just...
And that might be good for the May 28th one, but May 12th, we're meeting, right, don't we all meet the day before? Maybe there's some debriefing that would happen there.
Or thinking about a communication plan. I mean, we should know where we, you know, we know where we landed, and again, how are we going to tell the story? And our goal is to get this passed the first time around.
And maybe on, you know, and with that, maybe at the 12th, also, I'll have feedback from the rest of the council regarding any adjustments or any considerations they want to, to impact the both of us, then we can have that conversation. But I can also share those that don't impact the...
Well, won't that have happened on the 11th at 7:00 PM? Won't we know all of that? But we'll know that the night before, won't we?
Yeah, because you'll see the adjustments.
But then I think like what Peter's saying, we'll know sort of where we're at, and so then how do we move from May 12th to June 14th?
Well, that's all messaging, I'd like, Peter, that's all messaging.
Right, but how do we, yeah.
We sit down and we decide, you know, to Tom's point, do we want two or three, what are the two or three takeaways that we want to keep hitting on, coming on? I mean, we could, you know, anybody can, the way it's set up, anybody can start big and go as deep as they want, but we should probably, to your point, Tom, have some kind of message, joint message that we issue that we can bring to the council and you can bring to the board, and then we can all get on the, get on the same page.
I forgot about the calendar, yeah, May 11th, we'll have already made a decision on the finance committee, yeah.
But, but the council's second reading is into the following week, you know, things aren't done until the council's approved all those. So, I think it makes sense to keep that date and...
Oh, yeah, and I like the idea of communication, I think that could be sort of...
So, you want to simplify that agenda and just kind of...
Have it a workshop.
Yeah, have no kind of special topics, just be in a position to react to what the finance committee...
Communication strategy. And also, not to bring any, not to look at it from a negative perspective, but also talk about contingency planning around the budget, what if, the what if, you know, what if the citizens don't, you know, talk about, June, there is no approval, what do we do as a group? Because the one piece that fell apart, that I'll agree fell apart last year, was the